All right, fixed quality, June 13th. Doveray School District School Board meeting in order. If everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bankes, if you have roll call, please.
Mrs. Breton here. Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. De Show.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie.
Here.
Mr. Rahouser.
Here.
Seven members present.
Okay, thank you. We'll start the evening with a presentation by Crabtree.
Tonight, what we want...
Just give me one minute. I'm gonna do a little status update presentation. Okay, so we just wanted to kind of give you an overview of our capital project planning that's been going on here for the past year or so. So, for the update, we wanted to look back as to what has been done to this point. So, in 2015-16, we had many discussions and presentations surrounding future capital project needs for the district based on educational program and also current building deficiencies. Also, a feasibility study was completed by Crabtree, Royal Broad Associates, and approved by the board prior to the PlanCon moratorium in May of 2016. And also in 2016, the search for an architectural firm began to look at what our future capital project needs are. On March 21st, 2017, the Board of Directors appointed Crabtree, Royal Broad Associates as the Architect of Record for a potential project. In April of 17, we began formulating two planning groups and also a steering committee. I wanted to just give you a quick list of who is participating in those committees. First, we have our core administrative planning group, which is consisting of currently, now with Ken's departure, we have Tracy Kroom, the Assistant Superintendent, myself, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Wassler. And we consider this our core planning group, and all of these people are also in on the other two groups that I'm gonna talk about here. So next, we have an educational planning group. And what this group does is come in and we really talk about the meats and bones of our educational programming and what our programming might want to look like 10, 20 years down the road. So again, it's our core group. It's also our new intermediate school principal, Mrs. Gross. We have teachers ranging from history gym, life skills, English, music, science, and CTE. We also have a guidance counselor on there. We also have a library media specialist on that group. So we really have a good overall group of people from, you know, different aspects of our educational programs. And finally, I apologize for the graphic on this, the steering committee to the board. So, we will have the core group and the educational programming group will then kind of say, hey, here's what we've been talking about. But the steering committee is really going to steer the project to the board and, you know, give them ideas and recommendations and really be the heart of the group that will be communicating with you all. On this committee, again, it's the core group that I had presented earlier. We also have two board members on, Mr. Eifert and Mr. De Show. And we have four parents and we also, three students, a teacher, guidance, and again, principals. So, we really have, all of these groups have a good mix of people from kind of all of the different aspects of education.
And one of those parents is also a teacher. Amanda Renfro.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
No sale. Just throw that in there.
Okay. So, throughout the past month, we've been planning for options. On May 15th, the core group had a meeting to kind of facilitate our future meetings and formulate planning teams and things like that. Then on May 18th, the board was presented by Crabtree with a listing of viable options on a high level. And also, we had RBC here to present an overview of a bond parameters resolution, which is part of the agenda tonight. On June 6th, we sent a project survey out to the board for completion so we could start to get an idea in our groups, what are the priorities of the board, whether it be cost or educational programming or building organization, site adaptation. And Crabtree will cover that in their presentation. And then on June 12th, which is yesterday, we also had another core group meeting and a steering committee meeting to review those options and review the results of the survey that had been sent out and formulate the presentation for the board today. So here we are today, June 13th. Crabtree is going to present the viable options for the board to assess and transition to begin a design process in July of 2017. And RBC is here to answer questions on the bond parameter resolution. That is on the agenda. And also, they, Mr. Phillips will also be able to answer any questions you may have on New York County School Technology Bond Refunding. And that concludes my presentation. Let me just, give me a second and I'll pull up Crabtree's presentation.
Jen, can I ask a quick question? So, at what point, so it sounds like those two, the core committee and the steering committee, those were kind of handpicked people?
Yeah, I mean through, Mr. Wassler actually developed some of that based on student, I'm not sure if you wanted to say how you developed some of those people?
Sure. So, the programming group, what we tried to look at was not just making sure every subject was represented. We also tried to represent individuals who were not only employees but also were former graduates of the district. We tried to represent people who were parents but also employees. We tried to get a cross-section as much as we could, also between level of newer teachers and people who've been here 30 years. So, we really tried to get not just a singular perspective, but bring as much diversity into that room with the limited capacity of eight or nine members that we had available. With the steering committee, we tried to find individuals who have students involved in multiple activities at the building but also have students at multiple levels within our district. So, most of those have students who have either graduated or will be moving up at that cycle and have students at the lower levels. So, they bring the perspective not only from having a student currently there but also understand the current programming of our lower levels within our school system.
Okay, so at what point will more of the public then be able to voluntarily join a committee?
I don't know that we have formulated that. I mean, we're very early planning stages at this point. I know we're gonna do some surveys here coming up and then not in the foreseeable future, but we, I mean, we don't even have like a concrete, like, hey, this is what we're looking at yet.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Is your pointer working?
Yep. Great. Okay, so, thank you. Great introduction. We've covered a lot of groundwork over the last few weeks. And tonight, what we're going to do is try to bring everyone up to speed from May of 2016 to what we would project for a potential project a year from now. So, we're gonna catch up in terms of construction costs to make them current. We're gonna take you through an evaluation process to establish how options are going to be reviewed and whatever feedback anyone has. We're gonna walk you through the four options, I believe, as we see them at this point, and then try to pull the whole thing back in a summary format to help the decision-making So, the first thing we're gonna start with is baseline, a cost update. You know, where were we? We talked about May of 2016 was the facility study cost range of 54 to 58 million for the new high school. That was the Part A scenario. That was sized for 1,200 students, and again, that was about a year ago. What we're seeing now is the current cost from 58 would go to 64, almost 65 million based upon, we've increased the size, the capacity. I think we talked a little bit about enrollment last time, that you have grades now that will almost maximize. So, students currently in the district will put you nearly at a 1,200-student capacity. So, there was some concern that a 1,200-student-capacity high school would be at maximum capacity. So, we've increased the square footage to accommodate 1,400 kids. There have been construction cost increase and there has also been cost escalation that we'll talk a little bit more specifically and you'll hear from the experts to borrowing, increase in borrowing as well. So, this is our current update to the Part A that was submitted. So here are a couple of the key indicators. First and foremost, what does 1,200 to 1,400 students translate to? We had about 250,000 square feet planned, the educational program, for the design of a new high school. The 1,400 and all the information that we've learned over the last few weeks regarding 21st-century planning, which you'll hear us talk about, would take the building to about 275,000 square feet. Some other indicators are a cost of escalation and inflation, which we've adjusted here. It was 1.5% in the study and I believe we're now looking at 2.5%. The dollars per square foot really hasn't changed significantly. We were at about $170 a square foot for the building structure. We made a minor adjustment of about $2 a square foot. And the last key kind of item is this cost to midpoint of construction. We're now looking at two years past the previous Part A, and we include this cost escalation factor, not to bid day but to the point of the midpoint of construction where contractors have to estimate not being able to purchase all their materials on bid day. So, they will continue to incur potentially some increase. So, that's a precaution in the estimating. So, that's the cost update. The next piece we want to move into is the evaluation process. And this is the criteria that we used, our, if you will, guiding principles to establish how we would develop, think about each of the options and evaluate each of them. Cost obviously is a key factor, number-one factor. However, the ability to incorporate the educational program, when you look at an addition renovation versus a new building, we're going to try to give you some guidance on where those advantages and what disadvantages might be. We talked a little bit about phasing and disruption, which option has the least impact and which option has the most impact relative to construction and its duration. Building organization probably ties into the educational program also when you're talking about planning a high school for 21st century and beyond. Where those spaces are, adjacency, how certain spaces are able to be accessed by the community, how they're able to be locked down after hours and still provide access. Building organization is key. And renovation, that's harder to accomplish than it is in a new building. Student-staff safety and actually, safety of all the occupants of the building at any point in time is very important. And site adaptability was a key criteria that we use to evaluate. So, the process began with determining the need. These were not wants, these were needs to fulfill the educational program. We developed, working with the administrative team, a draft educational program. That was our effort to quantify and make sure we understood each of the program spaces, what was unique about each grade, how teaching occurs in these environments. So, we needed to do an educational program for the high school, the intermediate, and also understanding the capacity and the needs of the sixth-grade educational program. That then helps us translate, is there space missing? Is it in the wrong location? Do we need additions to satisfy that? Is it new construction or is it renovation? When we get into the existing building area needs, we have a great grasp of the existing buildings from a mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and architectural perspective on what kind of infrastructure improvements would be, need to be made. Now, anytime we're comparing an addition and renovation, a new building, for the purpose of looking at the cost, we're always going to assume a renovation would be a comprehensive project, that all major buildings would be, all major building systems would be replaced, all finishes would be replaced, because that's really the only apples-to-apples comparison that you can make to a new building. However, at the end of the day, it's a board decision that controls that scope of work and that budget. But for the purpose of our comparison, just sort of make sure you establish that they're comparable in every way that we can make them for evaluation purposes. We evaluated the sites extensively. We're gonna show you usable area. We looked at floodplains, we looked at slope, we looked at playfields, athletics, and needs of the curriculum outside the building for phys ed as well. Then we're going to discuss project costs for each option so you have a comprehensive option and its relative costs moving forward to help guide the decision-making process again. So, this was our summary of what we heard pretty consistently and repetitively, both needing, needs for the high school and the intermediate school. First and foremost was providing an environment that's conducive to 21st-century learning. That was at the top of the list. Educational programs should always be first. Understanding how flexible spaces and teaching changes that occur over the years, how can the building adapt to those changes and still provide you that flexibility? Simply adequately-sized spaces to support arts, athletics, and you could go into things technical in nature of the kitchens, the cafeterias, seating capacity, and the ability to provide, you know, the number of meals and so forth. So, we've looked at how these spaces are all adequately sized to accommodate the students. And importantly, equal the safety and operations. Try to provide a more efficient layout to promote safety and an efficient, low-cost building operational system. This is a little small to project, but we wanted to demonstrate, this is the administrative team, this is Jared's efforts along with the entire group, to very specifically and more finitely, if you will, demonstrate what the high school needs are. So, you can see the list is fairly comprehensive. We didn't want to summarize that too briefly, so we wanted to include that as it was prepared by the admin team. So, the high school educational program, for point of reference again, the existing building is approximately 216 or 17,000 square feet. To get to a 1,400-student capacity, a new building scenario application would require about 275,000 square feet. We have not designed the building. We've gone through some spreadsheet analysis and grossing factors that we've used on many high schools, some of the high schools that you've toured. We also looked at their relationships and we're fairly confident that this is a good planning number to provide adequate program space for the high school for many years forward. The intermediate school is just a little over 123,000 square feet. There are already some modulars there, and I think for those of you that have walked through recently while the kids were still in there, you'd see that the educationally-academic wing's pretty tight. We'll talk about some other things, but the program for that to satisfy those needs would be about 135,000 square feet. Again, from an educational perspective, we think the program to satisfy the sixth-grade needs would be about 12,000 square feet. So, some cost estimating guidelines when we get into it in a little bit more detail, just for reference again. Our renovations will range, but generally, they're about $115 a square foot. Again, that is trying to take an existing space to near new construction. So, that would be new lighting, new mechanical systems, new power distribution, electrical, and all the finishes in the space. All the things that instructors would use and students would use in each of the educational spaces, that would get us near a new level of construction. Now, the additions you'll see are a little bit higher than new construction. When we get into some of the additions, renovation scenarios, there are always unforeseen conditions. When you have multiple additions tying into multiple locations, that dollar per square foot tends to go up. It's always slightly higher. It's a little bit more complex every time you tie in. New construction is a little bit lower. That's about the 172 mark. There's equity when you're building a brand-new building and you don't have those complex tie-ins and starts and stops and phases and so forth. So, there's some efficiency gained. We also heard some question if we could provide a site analysis of usable acreage. And what we came up with and worked with our civil engineers at the high school site currently, there's almost 28 acres, but when you quantify the stadium, the tennis courts, and the maintenance areas, and the floodplain, you can see you're losing about 9.3 acres for the first three items. And there's about a little over five acres that are in the floodplain. That takes you to about 13 usable or manageable acres. That doesn't mean we're not taking parking. We're talking about buildable space, if you will. Conversely, at the intermediate school, you have about the same acreage, almost 31 acres. Now, there is some steep slope and there are some floodplains, but that only accounts for about seven and a half acres. So, from a practical standpoint, there's about 23 usable acres or buildable acres, if you will, on the intermediate site. We also talked about the relationship to, you know, where the high school is now and for certain programs, who's traversing the street and how often. And this is what we understood, actually, in the high school site, what you currently have for phys ed, track, football, and tennis. However, the high school students are crossing the street for all the fields on the intermediate site, for baseball, softball, soccer, lacrosse, hockey, and obviously, swimming with a pool. So, by some measure, there's an advantage that we'll quantify later that, you know, the high school placement on the intermediate site would actually reduce traffic fewer. Now, you would be crossing to use the stadium, but you can see there's a number of, a greater number of fields currently capable to be provided on that site. So, that's a positive, if you will. Hand it over to Scott to walk us through the options.
Thank you. So, at any point, a lot of information to go over here, so at any point, any questions, just feel free to stop me. So, if you recall, the last time we were here, we talked about some master plan options and kind of narrowed it down to four viable options. I'm gonna go through each one of those and talk about how each of those evaluation criteria are accommodated in that, within that option. So, we'll start with option one, and these are no particular order, but option one looks at constructing a new high school on the high school site, demolishing the high school once it's complete, and then doing renovations and additions to the intermediate school to meet their current educational program needs. And then also, with each one of these options, we also evaluate how it can accommodate the sixth grade, should you choose to venture down that path of bringing the sixth grade to the intermediate school. So, first thing we'll look at is educational program, and as John touched on a little bit before, when you have a new high school, you can kind of have a clean slate and really accommodate the educational program to its fullest. That's with appropriate-sized spaces, incorporation of the 21st-century learning environments. And then, one of the key areas is, as we understand how education evolves over the years, it's really incorporating that flexibility into the design. So, you know, the way schools used to be designed is very traditional as far as four walls in a classroom and very rigid with corridors and things like that. And what we like to do these days is make things more open, more flexible, so that as, as the educational delivery model changes or as things change over the years, your building's able to adapt with it. And similar with the building organization, obviously, with a new high school, you can properly organize your adjacencies, whether it be departmental or groupings of grades or however you decide to do it, we can organize it adequately. We can group some of your public spaces. Right now, I think your high school has a lot of dysfunctional space as far as auditorium at one side, gymnasium at another, and the more you're able to group those public spaces, the easier it is to control and to have one point of access. Also, flow of students, as you get more additions and renovations to a school, you know, that kind of flow breaks down and you get a lot of kind of segregated space. So, with the new building, you're able to accommodate that and just get an overall high operational efficiency for the design. Safety, and you'll see how many of the things we integrate as far as student safety in today's buildings, we're able to do whether it's a renovation, addition, or a new construction, things like cameras, car to access, some of those security features. So, obviously, with a new building or renovation construction, you're able to do those things. But one of the big things you're able to do in a new construction is, back to the building organization, you can kind of think holistically about how your staff and your support spaces are organized throughout the building so you can monitor students and control safety. So, this is just a, don't think of this as a design, this is kind of just a quick kind of diagram to get you, to get a sense of scale on what the site would look like. So, as John mentioned, we did kind of do an analysis, and this is, this could be what a building might look like on that school. You can see in the blue here, I mean, on that site, the blue here is the existing high school. So, there's room to construct it back here and stay out of the wetlands. The wetlands kind of come through here, through this area here. As John mentioned before, the developable area on this site is a little bit more limited than the intermediate school site. So, what you end up with is actually less field. So, currently, there's a practice field here and here, and then, of course, you have the stadium. In order to locate the building in a, in an area where you're not displacing the students of the high school, we'd have to displace a field. We are, with this option, we are able to get adequate parking, but as I said, you would lose a field. And then, currently, there's a right-of-way that comes through here that would need to be reworked if we went down this option.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So, is that, I'm just trying to picture it in my head, does that just use that, I mean, it couldn't just use that back parking lot behind the gym? So, you're going down over the hill.
Right.
With that building.
Right.
So, some of the building would be down lower than the rest of the building?
Yep.
Okay.
So, on this option, you'd enter on the first floor and then go down for the two-story.
Okay.
And, like I said, this is very high-level, not a lot of development of the floor plan and all that, but it's more just taking the building program and see how it would fit on the site from a, from a massing standpoint.
I have two, two questions on this particular option.
Sure.
Number one, I was told there's a pretty, fairly large utility line that comes in, a sewer line that comes through those practice fields. Was that factored into this, this process? And the second thing was, back to the original thought of a renovation we did back in 2000 with, you know, with, you know, with being less than 20 years, does that pose a problem with, you know, getting reimbursed for this?
Yeah. That's a very good point. So, one of the things we've been kind of playing phone tag with the Department of Education on that aspect of, you'll see, there's two options that we're gonna look at, that when we go through the cost, there's a caveat, is we don't know what that's gonna do to your reimbursement of how, what stance they're gonna take of your current reimbursement. We feel pretty confident that what we do know is that if you choose to do a project on this site, whether it be additions and renovations to the high school or a new construction of a high school, you will most likely forego your current reimbursement. And Jen, is that pretty much what?
Right. So, after talking to PDE, he said that we would, we wouldn't have to pay back what we have already received, but we would not receive funding going forward, we wouldn't receive that, that funding going forward for any bond issues that are related to any of those projects that we have even refunded.
And we, because it's within the 20 years on the site, we would have to apply for a waiver to get reimbursement. So, we're trying to get in touch with PD to understand that a little bit more, but haven't gotten a phone call back yet, so. A good point. And then, as far as the site utilities, you know, like I said, this wasn't an exhaustive analysis like we do once we, once we know what design we're going through. We did put a kind of allowance, so to speak, on the site work, and I believe on this, it was about three and a half million dollars. So, you know, something like a sanitary line would be, would be encompassed in that, in that cost estimate. But as we get further along, you know, the cost that John reviewed before, you know, that's kind of a starting point. As we know more information and do site surveys and, and work with the programming and develop that further, that, that might ebb and flow or go up and down. There might be decisions to be made. There might be decisions to be made by the board, you know, if it does go beyond a level you're comfortable with of how to do it. But it's kind of a process, it's an evolution that, as we get more further along in the process, we'll get more refined information.
Okay, thank you.
Does the cost of the construction include the tearing down of the old building?
Yes, yes, it does.
What's that cost?
We see that right around, we, $4 to $6 a square foot. So on a building of this size, I think we had the, actually, I think that shows up in the estimate here. I think on the intermediate school, it was, it was four and a half, or it was half a million dollars. I think that shows up. So yeah, it's about the same. So we're estimating $4 a square foot on the intermediate school site at half a million dollars, and the high school's a little bit larger, so it would probably be around $6 to $750,000.
I'm glad you could see that.
Yeah. And this PowerPoint, you know, for some of that smaller information, Jen does have that, and are you going to be posting it on the website?
Yeah, I definitely can. We didn't want to bombard with details, like the small minute details, we wanted the presentation to be an overview of the options at this point. I'll put that information out, though.
So talking about phasing disruption, we're classifying this as moderate disruption. We don't want to say no disruption. You will be building a high school, or building a school on the same site as a currently operating school, so it'll be more of a distraction than anything. There will be some onsite construction traffic, but it's really a simplified phasing plan. You kind of, you know, build a new school behind the school, and then that last summer you use to take down the, take down the other school and construct the site amenities that are in its place. Middletown Area High School actually just completed this past year and undertook the same, the same task. They built a school, new high school behind their existing high school and did the same thing, so. When we talk about the intermediate school, of course, that would be more significant disruption because you're talking about doing, constructing additions and renovations to meet their current programmatic needs. So we're, well, if this is the option to go forward with, of course, any renovation addition scenario, we endeavor to do a very detailed phasing plan that has the least amount of impact on the students. And with that, what you do is you try to do as much as you can over the summers, but inevitably, there's going to be some shifting around and most likely multiple times, you'll have to shift around students and staff. And then, of course, just dealing with renovation, instead of renovate, instead of a new construction behind the school, you're now renovating and adding on to directly adjacent to students. So it does create a lot more disruption. So looking at the cost, as John mentioned before, where we are with a new high school construction cost is around $64.8 million, and that constitutes 275,000 square foot construction. The intermediate school, the renovations would be, for that school would be around 121,000 square feet, and the additions of what we would need for the educational program would be around 14,000 square feet, so that's a $26.3 million project. And then, if you were to choose to bring the sixth grade up to the intermediate school, that would be another 12,000 square foot addition, around $3.5 million. I will note that this is, this is the most costly option, and probably this slide alone would be enough to almost eliminate this as one of the options.
Just, I'm sorry to jump in. There were questions about some of the detailed costs. When we show cost for each of the projects, they are all total project cost. So it is building, site, financing, professional fees, furniture, permitting, inspections, contingencies, and we do that consistently for every estimate. So there, you're looking at total project cost for each line item.
Yeah. And once again, there's that disclaimer at the bottom that we need to verify the reimbursement scenarios with PD for this option. So option two is very similar, is similar to option one in that it does look at a new high school, but in this scenario, we're looking at constructing a new high school behind the intermediate school and then the, converting the high school to the intermediate school. The major benefit of this option is that the high school has the capacity to accommodate the intermediate school without any major additions. Not only that, it can accommodate the sixth grade without any additions as well. So you'll see that kind of shake through in the cost, but also from a phasing standpoint, this option doesn't have any significant additions and renovations when you're, when you have an occupied school. So as far as the educational program, the building organization, the student safety is very similar to what we discussed in option one, and that is, when you do a new project, you have the utmost flexibility and you can incorporate everything as you had ideally So looking at some of the site adaptability, because this has more developable area, we're actually able to accommodate additional fields beyond what you currently have. We're not, as John mentioned before, we're currently in the programming phase, which, if you remember from last meeting, that's going to basically go over the whole summer. So we haven't gotten into, you know, what are the athletic needs and programming that yet to determine, is it a softball field, is it another practice field, what is that? But it's important to note that you do have the capability in this option to accommodate that additional field. This does provide adequate parking, more, significantly more than what you currently have at the high school. And once again, this can be easily phased. It's a little bit hard to see here, but in the blue is the existing intermediate school, and this is the proposed high school in the rear. Any questions on this? Once again, this is very high level. With any one of these options, whatever you go forward with, it's probably going to look a lot different than what you see here. This is more just to get an apples-to-apples comparison.
Are you, are...
Donegal built a new high school, they changed the high school.
They, yeah, Donegal did a new high school and then came back and converted their...
That's really loud.
Yep.
Is the two fields there on the left side of the parking area there, that would, they are fields as shown on that design?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Would that require like a pretty major grade change?
No, I mean, this would be working with it if you, if you, this is almost where your current drive is right now, so this is kind of a drop there. And actually, the site, when they first built the intermediate school, if you look back at the original contours, it was extremely significantly graded as far as where it is now. It was, it was basically sloped from intermediate Ave consistently all the way back to this creek, and they did some major, so major site grading. So this wouldn't be a, this would be kind of like a terrace level, probably below the student parking level, but it wouldn't be a significant undertaking to regrade that. Like I said, whether this is a play field and there's a softball field over here, you know, we're not, I don't think we're at that level on the programming side, but. Other questions on this? And as with what we looked at for the high school, the phasing disruption is pretty much, as option one, the phasing disruption is pretty much the same. You're building a school behind it, and then you're, at the last summer, you're tearing down the intermediate school and then doing the site prep. And by move, by converting the high school to the intermediate school, really, the, what you were doing is the last summer, as you're, as you're doing your site work and your demolition of the intermediate school, you're converting, you're doing any renovations needed to convert the high school to the intermediate school. And it's really no disruption at all because it's done over the summer when students aren't So the cost of this, once again, we're looking at that $64.8 million number here. Converting the high school to an intermediate school, we're looking at moderate renovations through this because, because your high school does have the capacity and the flexibility to more than accommodate your intermediate school needs, you can look at it as more of a move-in scenario. We are noting some additions. There is a portion of the wood, of the existing high school that is wood frame that we would recommend, and I believe the administration would like to eliminate, and also that would allow us to do a more, do a secure vestibule addition and kind of clean up the entryway there. So looking at a $5 million project for that. And then, of course, as I mentioned before, the existing school has the capacity to accommodate your sixth grade, so really, it's a zero-dollar cost to bring sixth grade up should you choose to do that. Total project cost is 69.8. So option three looks at keeping both schools at their same location and doing comprehensive additions and renovations to each one of them to meet their current need. And then, of course, to bring sixth grade up, it would require additional additions at the intermediate school. So whenever you get into a renovation scenario, it's less than ideal educational program implementation. Some, and, and we're able to do a lot with additions and reconfiguration, but there's some limiting things of what you're, what you're dealing with, with infrastructure, whether it be the size of your classrooms, or the width of your corridors, or some of your adjacencies, or how a lab might be sized and configured. So there are some limitations that are cost prohibitive to address, so there, so that would have an impact on the educational program. And also, what I mentioned before, the flexibility, those open collaboration spaces that are prevalent in today's 21st century learning environments are cost prohibitive to go through a school and start knocking down bearing walls and things like that to convert those spaces. And then, adjacencies of curriculum may not, may not be as ideal, and you might have to live with some of those. Similar to the building organization, in this scenario, actually, there's a couple, couple of conditions in your existing high school that makes for poor building organization. The flow of students, you have a lot of dead-end corridors where, where you might have a cluster of classrooms where that's the only thing at the, in that zone of the building, and then if you want to go anywhere else, you're going, you're kind of backtracking the way you came to get to the rest of the building. Once again, the piecemeal expansion are less than ideal. And that security circulation aspect of when you do add-on and add-on and add-on and do a whole bunch of additions, you have that kind of piecemeal approach. So we say the safety is somewhat compromised. Of course, we'll still be able to incorporate amenities like cameras, secure vestibules, card access, and those aspects of the project. But some of the negative safety factors are the multiple points of entries. There are considerable points of entry around the building. Because of that piecemeal nature, the layout results in something that's hard to supervise for students. I think your principal could probably speak to that most effectively. And then, that separation of public use spaces. So, you know, if you have different events, then you have different control points where you're having to monitor and control access to the public. So this is, once again, just a high-level conceptual, more of a, an image to get an idea of what you would, what the additions would require, what additions would require to meet your educational program to the existing high school. So once again, the development is limited because of the size of the site. This one, we would be able to get the same quantity of fields, but it would be at the sacrifice of reducing parking. You know, we're estimating, you know, somewhere around 50 spaces or 10% of your parking. And once again, we're looking at rework or your right-of-way. This, just to get into a little bit of the detail, we're looking at, this is your current auditorium that is currently undersized with any core space. It's not like you can add 10 seats to the end, to the side of it, or however many seats to the side of it, or expand your stage very easily. You're, for those core spaces, you're really looking at rebuilding them. So your auditorium was here, this is actually what we look at for the natatorium. There's not enough room in this existing right-of-way to fit appropriate sized stage and auditorium. So we're looking at, this would be the auditorium. This would be expansion of some of your educational program needs, expansion of your career and technology needs. And the reason we're looking at this here versus over here is we don't want to box in your career and tech program because it needs direct access from the exterior for deliveries, and then expansion of cafeteria and kitchen on this side. Once again, replacement of that wood frame structure here and expansion of your administration. So that's just a high-level picture of what that might look like. As I mentioned before, this is probably the most disruptive project scenario option because you are doing significant demolition, renovation, and construction to occupied schools in this, in this option. And so some, some of the same things we talked about before, shifting of students and staff, you're constructing under an occupied school, and this would be the longest duration because most likely, if you undertake this option, you're not going to do both schools exactly at the same time. That would be a lot, a lot to undertake for your administration, and a lot to undertake for your students as far as strain. So this would probably be looked at phasing in a way that you do one project and then finish, then come along with the second project. So the high school renovation, about 200,000 square foot of renovation, you know, that accounts for some of the building being demolished to, of existing programs that don't meet your needs. And then, about 96,000 square feet of additions for a $53 million project cost. And then, the intermediate school renovations and the sixth grade addition, we actually saw in a previous option, those are the same cost there. So looking at a total project cost of around $82.9 million. And this, once again, this is another one that you, we need to verify, what does that, what does that mean to your reimbursement scenario? And then, the final option we looked at was, once again, doing an addition renovation scenario for both buildings, but now, what does it look like if we, if we, if we switch sites and convert the existing intermediate school to a high school and convert the existing high school to an intermediate school? You'll see, once again, we have the benefit of the intermediate school moving into the high school and having the capacity to handle it, but now we have actually a negative impact where we, where we have an intermediate school that has a lot of core spaces. For instance, your auditorium, your cafeteria, gymnasium, that were really designed for an intermediate school setting and aren't appropriate. So you're, so you'll be looking at essentially starting over on those spaces and building, building a new gym, building a new auditorium, building a new caf, or expanding or building a new cafeteria and a new natatorium. So a lot of those core spaces would be basically built as new. So once again, not to go through it all again, but these, these factors up here, your program, your organization, student safety, and the phasing disruption are similar to what we've talked about before with the renovation addition scenario. There are a couple specific things to note with this regarding, with the scenario where you're looking to convert the intermediate school. On the lines of safety, your intermediate school has corridors that are eight feet wide. That's a big area of concern typically in a high school scenario, corridor scenario, especially with a student body of this size, we wouldn't recommend anything less than 12 feet. Even at there, you can have pinch points where you have a lot of high traffic, so I believe if you talk to your intermediate, well, any of your intermediate school staff, they currently have issues with circulation in between, especially in between periods. We actually felt that on, on the tour when we went through the interview process. And then, when you, it'll be even more compounded if you put a high school there. And that's one of the things that it's cost prohibitive to go and widen every corridor. You'd be essentially spending more money than you would to build a new school. A positive of having to actually rebuild all the public spaces is you would have the ability, from a building organization standpoint, to group them all together. So this is what that might look like. You can see here, the amount of building that is left over from the original intermediate school is here, the dash line here that represents the building that's demolished, and then the lighter blue is the additions. So we would be able to accommodate additional fields in this scenario, as with the, with the new high school on this site. However, because you're dealing with a larger building footprint, it's not as efficient as a new school. It's not as much two-story space as you would do in a new school. So it is a little bit more sprawling than you would have with a new, with a new option. So it does take up more site area, and therefore, one of, you know, one of the drawbacks is inadequate parking. Now, you could switch that out and say, we, well, don't do one of the fields and we can have the adequate parking, then you're, then you're short on your field. So somewhere, the site's going to have to compromise for, for that expansive footprint that you'll end up with. And this is probably the most difficult single-phase project, just because you're taking down a lot of those core spaces. And it's not like when you're renovating or constructing new classrooms, you're shifting students in different classrooms, but when you have to take down an auditorium to make space for something else, then you're probably without an auditorium for a year or something like that. or something like that. So to convert the intermediate school to the high school, I did include the demolition square footage, just so you can get a sense of how much unusable space there is for, for those core spaces that you'd have to take down. So the renovations are 90,000 square feet, additions of 195,000, and the demolition of 47 for a project cost of 60.8 million. And then we've seen these two numbers before as well, and option two, where the high school would be converted to an intermediate school and minor renovations and the, the construction of the new front entrance. So that's a total project cost of 68 point, 65.8. Are there any questions on any of the options before we kind of, in, in any of the individual options, before we kind of try to summarize everything and wrap it up?
Would be the disruption on the fourth option there, what kind of impact would that be to make those changes to the current intermediate school going to the high school?
I, I think your biggest challenge would be those core spaces. So in other words, they're kind of located in this zone here, and actually what you see here is we're renovating, we probably most likely renovate the gymnasium, convert to our auxiliary gym, even though you might need, not need that in the program, there's really, that existing gymnasium isn't, isn't adequately sized. So I think the biggest thing would be the dealing with how you phase in those big moves of taking down an auditorium and, and constructing a new one.
Is it possible that, you know, housing three or two grades on there right now might require portable classrooms temporarily, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And is that cost figured into some of your thinking at this point? That could be an additional?
The cost of modulators would not be figured into, into the cost, but, but it all, it would all depend on what the final footprint ended up. Like I said, the more detail we get, we would get, the more we know that. But I'd say the biggest headache here would be, in addition to just, you know, having construction and renovations to an occupied school, the biggest one would be you probably, the intermediate school would probably have to live without some of its program spaces during construction.
I have one question.
Yes.
In looking in that two-year proposals, converting the high school into the intermediate school, you've already stated that the existing high school has a lot of dead end corridors, just, you get lost very easily in that school because of that. How would, within your renovations, would you be taking that into account and trying to manage that, and making that more of a, a user-friendly space?
I think what the, one of the benefits of the high school is because, it's not all, it's not like, let me look at this right. So you, the size of that allows you to not only move everyone in, but have extra space in addition to that. So with that extra space allows you to have more flexibility to do some of those things, like, you know, if you have an undersized classroom for art, you can combine two classrooms into one and still have space to accommodate another art classroom. Or, you know, if a lab isn't configured quite right, you can have, you can, you know, have the ability to maybe knock down a wall and make a larger lab that meets a need. So, so I think that kind of renovation would be taken into consideration, but I don't think as, like a major reorganization of the building would, as far as.
And then just a, a quick follow-up. With these minor renovations, then we would bring that building up to current code across the board?
Yes.
Yep. I'm gonna add, I want to add one other comment to your first question. One of the things that you might notice is the addition and renovation scenario, total square footage is larger than the new building. It's because some of those inefficiencies, we can improve and manage and try to repurpose dead end corridors and things like that, but eventually what happens is we end up occupying more square footage to try to solve that problem. So something to think long-term is, that's a larger building. You know, when you're talking about 10,000 or 15,000 square feet more building, you're heating and cooling that forever. So existing building renovations will tend to be less efficient than a new building. I think that's obvious, but it's not real when you look at, you know, all the different scenarios that we're looking at, so that's a good question. Okay, so I think we're gonna.
Yeah, just to go back to the numbers real quick, flip through my, so the intermediate school program was 135,000 square feet with 12,000 square feet for the, for the, for the sixth grade. So combined, it's about 150,000 square feet. And the existing high school is 216,000 square feet, so you actually have about 40,000 square feet to work with. I think you'd still probably keep, in that scenario, still, still keep some of your high school program over there, like maybe the, the lock, team lockers that serve the stadium, things like that, but, but you would have that extra flexibility to kind of play with, you know, the organization a little bit.
Yeah, I was just wondering, in any of the, the facilities with the existing middle school, even in the renovation or the new construction, the pool has been brought up a few times, the existing pool and it not being the proper depth and width for, for competitions, is that taken into consider, into consideration?
Yeah, in every one of these scenarios, it would be construction of a new pool. But, I mean, it's not, it doesn't meet your educational program, so in all four options, it would be construction of a new natatorium that addresses all your educational needs.
So for consistency, we did the same thing across, across the board? Okay, so home stretch, try to pull this together quickly. Here is, if you overlay these options titled across the top, one, two, three, and four, and then the projects along the left, you can see the total of each of the options that we've described so far. The next thing we did then was incorporated the board's ranking of the criteria in this particular order. First and foremost was an option's ability to incorporate the program, its cost, occupant safety, it's the site adaptability, ability to have a proper building organization, and then phasing, and its disruption to the staff and students. So we developed, this is subjective, but we needed to somehow pull together, so where do all of these criteria fall? So we utilized this indication of, you know, four stars has a higher ranking. It's, it would meet the educational program, or a one star it would not meet the educational program is ideally. So here again is that, now we've taken that same cost chart, again, option one, two, three, and four across the top, but now on the left you'll see the criteria, program, cost, safety, site, building organization, and phasing. We've discussed this with the administrative team and, and input, and we feel that this represents a starting point or a talking point to try to indicate where a particular option may have its strength, or it may have its weakness. And this is probably the one area that each of you as board members may think, something may deserve more stars or fewer perhaps. This was our pass, listening to what, what we heard and what we understand about your objectives, the criteria, moving forward. Last slide is to indicate where we are in the process, looking for some direction in July. We've talked about a number of the cost increases in construction. We assembled this schedule to illustrate the amount of time, I think, we talked, it's about a year-long process for the planning, design, the regulatory agency approval. To get to a point that you could even consider starting construction already puts us at July of 2018. There are indicators that if the project could move up earlier, we would prefer to see a project bid earlier in the year because it's more competitive. Contractors' bonds are not tied up. The later in the year it gets, the opposite occurs. However, this is a pretty important, large project that most bidders would competitively bid, but there are ideal conditions that would favor if the project were to move forward. So we've indicated this option analysis to move into the July time period, why we're already considering and developing the program because of the compressed timeframe that we're looking at with your expectation to consider even starting construction a year from now. So this is a start date of construction, July of 2018, and we're looking at completion of about 24 months. Pretty much, whether it's an addition and renovation or a new building, it's about two years. So that takes you, a July decision takes you out to 2020 for the project to be complete. So we wanted to give some frame of reference to the duration for each of these tasks.
And I think another important thing to note is, you know, with, with the July, you're basically selecting an option for us to base, to, to take to the next level in the design phase, to develop further. Really, you don't commit to spending money on a project to that, to that last red box down at construction start in June. So the commitment at this point would just be the design phase of the project.
So you're saying that the board wouldn't be voting on, yes, we're doing a project, and this is the type of project we're doing until that July date in 2018?
Well, when I say committing, so you would be selecting which option you want us to move forward with and develop the design. That is a significant undertaking, I will, I will say that, but as far as.
Construction contracts.
Construction dollars, you know, the, the, the full $65 million, you're not committing to that until you actually sign contracts with a contractor. You will be committing to which, you know, it'll be a commitment to which option you're going to be undertaking, because as we get further down this line, you know, to change, to change track, you're looking at, you know, offsetting the schedule by a year, probably.
So you're proposing that by July of this year, which is next month, that we would have a design choice in place and say, yes, we're ready to go on this?
Correct.
Select an option and say, proceed in that direction.
And then when does all of that public announcement and?
Yeah, so that's a good question.
Everything else come in?
So throughout, I don't have the other schedule, but I, but if you, if you recall the last time we were here, there was a very detailed schedule that probably had about 100 milestones on it. So I think one of the first things we'll do, once we get through, past this option, we know which way we're going, is we'll have kind of a educational session with the board that talks about the whole plan con process, what steps you have to approve along the way, where your Act 34 hearing might be, how we engage the public, when do we want, maybe want to have some public information sessions, how do we get these, you know, all those things, it's, it's kind of like the next step of the process, but I think the first thing we want to do is establish what option we're moving forward with, so we can kind of get, get the, get the wheels in motion for that.
Okay, I guess my understanding was that the public and all of that stuff was going to be involved before we even decided on a project that we were doing?
Yeah, and I guess to some extent, yeah.
So 30 days seems really, really fast.
Sure.
Like, how do you pull this together in 30 days?
Sure, sure. And, and I guess the, the answer of, we kind of backed into, you know, we, we talked with the administration, when do you want to have shovels in the ground and start construction? And an ideal construction start is over the summer, so you can get your site work and your footings and ground before the first winter. So we kind of worked back from July and worked with our civil engineers. Really, the, the biggest impact of the schedule is the approval process from land development and the, and the local authorities. And so that process basically works us back to a July decision, if we want to have a July construction start date. So, so it obviously can be pushed back, just the impact is, the later you start construction, the more, as John mentioned, the further you get into that summer bidding cycle, the less time you're gonna have to complete the project in the end, because you really want, unless we look at completing it over the winter months, which isn't ideal because you're moving staff over and things like that. But it just pushes that, that start date along further and might have cost impact, which, but, like I said, it was just the schedule we put together based on when you'd ideally like to start construction.
There's also, as you move through a process, select an option, any substantial addition or new building would require a public Act 34 hearing. That would be farther down the road once the scope of the project was defined, more details about the cost, actual floor plans, elevations, and so forth. So that public hearing component will be required at some point, but that's a few months down the road after the board at least narrows to an option. So there's some other opportunities along the way as well.
So we commit to an option before that Act 34 hearing where the public gets to be involved?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the Act 34.
I guess my understanding was that the public gets involved first, and we get information from the public and then proceed from there.
And I think we'll be getting information from the public all along, but we can't, as a team, sit here and try to design for options. We need some kind of recommendation, okay, you know, go on, on, on this option, because otherwise, we won't ever get done.
Right, and I think, you know, I mean, I think it's pretty clear which option is the, is the one to go with. It's just a matter of, as a district, is that what we're saying we're doing, or are we going to keep what we have? So, you know, I, I guess I don't feel like we were there yet, is where I'm coming from. And I certainly don't feel like we were there in terms of deciding on this in a month from now.
Maybe I can offer another part. So as you, as we work through this process, there are multiple steps, we call them, you know, of design, and also multiple steps of the plan con process. So along those, those, those steps, there's, there's approvals that have to happen from the board, and presentations that could happen to the community where we get their input. And at any point in that process, whether it be schematic design or design development, if you, do you have that?
I think we're.
There were different bars in that, in that schedule, but there's approvals that, at any time as a board or district, you could stop or change the project at any time. So, you know, I think I hear your concern is more committing to doing something at all versus committing to an option.
Right.
So at any time, should the board decide, they can commit to stopping or changing tracks. It just has impact on what you might do eventually, or if you don't do anything, then it has no impact, so.
We're not legally bound to do that option if we say next month we're doing this option.
What information we used to come up with 1,400 students with a steadily declining population in the school?
Studies standpoint. What was that, can you repeat it again?
What information? What do you come up, how do you come up with the 1,400? I mean, we're down to 230 now in kindergarten. Each year we're getting less kindergarten, so by the time this school is built, our biggest surge of students will be in the high school and near graduation, because each year we're getting less enrollment.
The size of a, the capacity of a building is probably the most debated issue that boards wrestle with. To what number do you plan to, to give you a comfort level that you would go down this path with this expenditure and not be out of space? That's probably one fear. The 1,400, the move from 12 to 1,400 was, I believe it's the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classes now that nearly have 300 per grade, so you would be at, or you'd be beyond potentially 100% utilization of the building. The 200, keep in mind, when you do a reimbursable project, you get one shot at reimbursement in 20 years, and they're contemplating changing that to 30 years in a potential revised plan con scenario. So if you do build to 12 and you experience additional growth, the Department of Ed is typically not supportive of funding additional projects for additional capacity, because they will say, well, it was a board decision to, you knew there was about 1,200 and you built to that number, so your dollar for dollar, if you have to add classrooms, it would be out of your pocket. So traditionally, the Department of Ed would really never bat an eye at building something at least 1 or 200, and a size of this building, easily 200 additional students, because they will not participate in reimbursement for a 20-year period if you get more kids. So it is a balancing act. You have to feel comfortable with what that planning number is, whether it's 1,200 or 1,400.
And actually, PDE requires you to plan for current enrollment plus 10%. So even, even when we do projects for a declining district where they're just meeting their educational program needs, we still have to plan for current enrollment plus
Just out of curiosity, this may be going a little bit further than, than the high level view, but in all those scenarios with, with a new auditorium, there's been some discussion about what seating capacity would be there. What, with a 1,400 student capacity at the high school, what does that translate for capability in an auditor, auditorium?
Sure, for our draft program, and I'll call it a draft, because we're still refining it, we were planning. were planning for 1,400 seats in the auditorium.
Also discussed seating capacity in gymnasium, seating capacity in auditorium, cafeteria. So we looked at all those major core spaces to get a handle on what your expectations were.
But you just figured adding for extra parking, because we don't have no parking space now.
The parking, the scenario where, I can go through each option and tell you what the parking counts were, at least what, you know, the preliminary look at that. The first option, which was to add a new, to build a new high school behind the existing high school, was about 600 spaces. The second option, which was to build a new high school behind the intermediate school, was around 700 spaces. And to put it in perspective, you have about 486 at your current high school. The third option, which was renovations and additions to the current high school, was around 425 spaces, so a little bit less. That's when we, we said we had to sacrifice parking. And then the fourth option, which was the conversion of the intermediate school to the high school, was around 450 spaces. Those were just kind of us in a vacuum, seeing what we could fit on the site. I think we still have to go through that programming exercise with the administration, determine what the actual need is.
Knowing that you don't have a crystal ball, how confident are you on the numbers that you presented to us as far as a dollar-wise?
Well, one of the things that we do is, we bid a lot of work throughout the course of the year, and the most recently bid, we looked at Middletown High School, which was two years ago. We escalated that to today dollars and then a year from now. And we also received bids in December for a new middle school for Cumberland Valley. That was about 240,000 square feet and a new 140,000 square foot elementary school. So we used that December new construction bid to, we talked about some of these escalation factors, to get to that 172. So they're very recent numbers on comparable scale projects, just within the past few months.
Yeah, and, and as you, like I said, as you get more detail and develop everything further, I would imagine there's going to be decisions that we'll bring to you to say, here's where we thought we were, and let's say there's, the steering committee says, all right, we want 2,000, you know, something that you never want, 2,000 seats in your auditorium. Okay, we're going to come to you and say, all right, well, that wasn't part of the original program, and here's the cost impact. What do you want us to do with that? And as a board, you'll have to decide, all right, are we going to increase the budget? Are we going to change the program? So that's another method that we use to control the project and the costs as we go along.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ken, would you like to, to speak?
Thank you. Also here tonight, Dave Twaddell, who works with John Cox and John's with Rhodes Design, and so is David, and they worked with Mr. Ray Meyer in terms of the resolutions. From the meeting last month, the goal was to, as you continue your discussions, to go ahead and to put in place with the Department of Education, or Department of Community and Economic Development, the appropriate legal documents for a parameters resolution and a parameters contract, just like we have done for every refunding that we've been doing here the last 10 years or so. And what this does, there, we reviewed this at the last go-around, but the parameters, just like for the refunding, we set a maximum interest rate, which is far in excess of what we would ever issue the debt. And also, we set forth, in this case, try to set forth a maximum principal amount. Now, we, we chose 70 million, because I think there's several reasons for that. One, you just saw the cost estimates before you. And I also think that it's appropriate in this instance is to, you know, sometimes boards say, well, jeez, if we set a max at 80 million, we, we, we can't afford 80 million. So let's go ahead and try to be really realistic on what the potential upside for this project can be. So based on, based on what you just saw, there's probably a couple of those options you can throw out, okay? And, and just from a cost standpoint. And there's probably a couple of them that definitely fit within what we're going to talk about tonight. So there's several reasons for getting the parameters contract in place. One, you always have potentials for change of legislation up in Harrisburg that could prohibit you from, you know, doing a debt issuance like this. You also have the, the prospect of not knowing exactly what the timing is going to be on the project. What are interest rates going to do? Okay? Shovels in the ground next July 8, you know, July 2018 may be ambitious, but it's realistic, especially since it's a 24-month project. And so we want to be able to, just like in the bond refundings that we've done, we want to be able to access the markets at the appropriate time that makes sense economically to bring the cost of the project in from an interest rate standpoint at the lowest possible cost. So the parameters resolution for consideration this evening, again, goes back to, until you issue the debt, there's really no cost. Eventually, you will be issuing debt. Okay? And so at that point in time, you would be going through the same process that we would be going through now. You'd be putting resolutions in place, filing it with the Department of Community and Economic Development, and going ahead and doing something. There's no cost to what you're doing tonight that is unlike doing this thing a year from now. But I think it gives us flexibility, it gives us legislative proactiveness. And so that's why you see a lot of school districts who are anticipating projects and are going through this same exercise that you're going through, they're in essence saying, okay, it's time to get everything documented legally, and that we can go ahead and, and decide on what the project's going to be. We can go ahead, we have the options in front of us, we can, you know, do the planning over the next year. And if we decide that, okay, you know, shovels are going to be in the ground in July of 18, we may be looking at doing something at the beginning of, the end of 17, beginning of 18. You know, that becomes our job to basically come back to you like we've had for 30-some years now, is to, you know, give you the best financial options. So that's really, Dave and I are here tonight with all the legal work, and he's here with the legal work, in terms of the resolutions that he and your solicitor put together. Basically, legalizing, documenting what is necessary from the state standpoint. So questions on the concept of the parameters, before David would go into, you know, a brief summary of the resolution?
Is this what I should ask some questions? Okay. So I can understand the finances in my household and all of that, but this is very foreign to me, so I'm trying to, to make sense of all this. So we're basically saying that this was, well, there will be 70 million dollars available to us should we decide to do a project? And you'll max it out at a certain interest rate?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The, which, which the interest rate is
I think it's 7%.
7%, which, quite honestly, we would probably never do the issue at 7%.
Because it, on 2-3% right now?
Yeah, because, because you can't afford it. However, we do not, we never know what the structure is going to be. We know what the principal structure is going to be. But let's say, which we have done here, and in fact, you still have some outstanding, let's say that we end up doing some variable rate debt. Okay? I'm not saying we're going to do that, because probably we wouldn't do that now, but we try to build as much flexibility into this schedule to allow us to look at all the financing options available to you.
Okay, so if we can't afford a 7%, then why would we max it out at 7%? If that's going to kill it as a district-
Again, it gives us flexibility, if we end up doing a variable rate deal, the, there are, those documents require a higher maximum rate for the purchasers. Okay? I know it's easy for me to say this, okay, because I've been doing this for a long time, don't get caught up in the numbers that show up here in terms of interest rates, because we're never going, if rates go up to 7%, more than likely, this project's not going to happen until rates would go down. Okay? Because you will not be able to afford it.
So are we obligated to issue the debt?
No. You are-
Not ever.
You are incurring the debt, and legally, David is going to probably jump in there and kick me, you know, one or two. You are incurring the debt for state purposes. But until you actually issue the debt, issue the bonds, just like the refinancing that we just got done doing, okay? The debt's incurred, but not issued.
So we wouldn't ever have to touch it if we don't decide to do these projects, and we won't be-
Correct.
We won't have fees and
Correct.
monies that we owe on it if we decide to never touch it?
Let's go back to 2006, when Act 1 came on board. 150 projects, they were at least across the state of Pennsylvania, districts, who, we had no idea what Act 1 was going to be. Okay? But they had major projects. So they, in essence, did this exact same thing prior to June 26th of 2006, because they wanted to be grandfather under existing law as opposed to Act 1 law. We still have some of those on the books. Okay? Now, every year, some of the principal goes away from those contracts. So someone may have done a $70 million contract, and there's only 40 million left, but it's still on the books at the state. Incurd, but not issued. Okay? So this is like an insurance policy, this mainly, in terms of really what you're trying to do is to secure your position at the state under current law as you know it now. Because what happens if you start down this process for the next year? Okay? Developing the program, developing the project, and all of a sudden, there's a change that prohibits you from doing certain things? Then you've basically wasted a year.
Okay, so, so when you, when there was a, kind of a schedule on the 23-page summary that you sent us, or the 23-page legal document, it talked about starting in 2018 to 2040, and how it went from that 70 million to that 151 million that we would end up, in essence, having to pay back. That's based on that 7% rate?
Yes.
Okay. So that's kind of the max-
Yeah.
But you're saying that that wouldn't be
No.
Possible, because we couldn't-
When we go back to all the studies we looked at last year at this time, you know, remember, we looked at, there was a nice summary that, that Jen put together from all of our stuff. You know, we were looking, at that time, the highest was a $65 million project. We're, we're trying to figure out how to utilize, best utilize your cash. Okay? We were talking six to eight million dollars of cash that you were going to be using to phase in mills, or throw at the project, or do whatever. You're looking at total payback with the interest rate assumptions way back then of about 100 million. That was based on 65 million dollars. Okay? So, again, this is, this is basically being proactive in terms of, you're in the decisions of, we need to do something. Whether it's option 1, 2, 3, or 4, is totally up to you.
Or no option.
Or, or, yeah, yeah, yeah. Or no option. So how do you protect yourself if, once you start down that path, that you can, essence, issue debt in the future?
So why is it important to do it now versus, why don't we wait until, you know, down the road when we're getting a little bit closer to saying, okay, yes, let's go ahead and, and get this started?
Good question. The whole discussion of property tax elimination, people felt pretty sure that through June 30, you'd be fine. What happens if they adopt something in, in August, September, October, make it retroactive July 1st? Then, then you would not have secured your position at the state. That's why. I can't tell you how many parameters we have done just like this in the last six months for people going through the discussions that you've gone through. And again, if you never do it, never use it, you'll be somewhat, you'll be like some of those schools in '06 who did it as a protective insurance policy and never used it. So it costs you the cost of the ad in the paper.
Didn't cost anything else?
No. No rating costs, no legal costs, none of my fees, nothing. Correct.
Question-
Thank you.
One of, one of the options there was fairly close to the 70 million. What happens if, you know, we adopt this resolution and, and something happens between now and then, and that option still looks good, but it's 71, 72 million? Then what?
One of the good things you have, Mr. Cook, because we had that discussion, and just like we don't take cavalier, cavalierly to 7%, we also don't want to say, let's come in a $90 million project. Because all of a sudden, geez, 90 is a lot of money. Okay? 70 is a lot of money, 20 is a lot of money. You have cash that we've been sort of saying, okay, we're going to use some of this to phase in mills, six to eight million, what's it going to be? A cost overrun like that can be handled internally. Okay? And so we did have that discussion. A cost overrun at 80 million, we don't probably have the cash. But I've done a lot of work with the firm here, you know, we've, we've talked about some of the, you know, they've talked about some of the projects, the Middletowns, Donagals, we've done all those as well. And they're very good at estimating. Now, no one can predict the future, we all know that. But they're pretty spot-on with respect to their, you know, to their estimates. But if you want 2,000 seats in an auditorium, that's going to probably cost you more money. Scott's going to come and tell you, so what's it going to cost? And then you're going to make your decisions from there. Any, before David gets into maybe the review of the, of the 23-page document, which he won't take 23 pages, any questions on the little summary sheet, the mechanics of what, you know, you're contemplating tonight in terms of securing a position, incurring but not issuing the debt?
Another quick question. So there's, is there an end date to when, like, to be, are we, do you say, okay, by the year 2030, you have to, have to use this money, or it's off the table?
It pretty much goes right through the, right now, the, it goes 18 to 40. Okay? So to the extent you don't issue something in 18, then 25,000 of this goes away. You don't issue something in 19, 25,000 more goes away. Okay? So the schedule, the schedule pretty much dictates the end date, yeah.
Okay. So by the year, if we wait till the year 2040, how much then it becomes available?
It, it, there's zero.
Okay. Gotcha.
There's zero.
Okay. So we are on a time constraint to a degree?
Yeah, you're on a time constraint because of the wraparound feature, you don't get really hurt until you get out to 28, when 5 million goes away. Okay?
But by then, it might cost another 20 million
Guarantee you.
Right.
Guarantee you. And I'm not an architect, but I can probably guarantee you that one.
On this bond issue, how much money is figured in of our own, or is none figured in?
There's none figured in, in terms of the 70 million. That becomes your card still in your hand, because you have the cash. So the original studies we had were using six to eight million to help phase in any type of millage requirement over the next, you know, seven, eight years. To the extent that we don't do that, we know where interest rates are, that money could be thrown at the project. So let's just say that the project comes in at 70 million, let's just pick a number. And let's say that we only need $4 million to phase in mills, or 5 million, and you still have two to three left, then we can maybe on the, on the final issuance, not issue the 70, issue 67. Okay? Let's say there's a cost overrun, as Mr. Cook, you know, you know, asked the question, and you need 71, 72. Then, again, that money could be used for that. So we haven't, that's, those are the, that's the fine tuning, just like, you know, Scott and John need to do the fine tuning of, once you decide on the project, now we start to really go from 20,000 feet down to 15,000 feet to 10,000 feet. That's the same thing with respect to the use of your cash. You're very fortunate. Okay? You've put money aside, you've saved money, we've done a lot of neat things here the last 20-some years, where you've made some money that you can use for future things. So the question is, is this a future thing? Okay? That, you know, that we're considering. But you have a lot of flexibility based on the great job that this board, previous boards, I know some of you have been around a long time, have, have put the district in a very good financial position to be able to consider something like this. Because issuing debt under Act 1 is not easy. Okay? The planning that you need to do, you pretty much have been doing that, okay, over the last five-plus years.
Our current budget plans for the next three years, after three years, does not show where we have cash available.
Well, I'm not going to speak to your budget, okay? But I would say, I would, I don't think you would be drawing down all your fund balance, that would be a fiscally irresponsible thing to do, from the standpoint of rating agencies, from the standpoint of spending money, because ultimately, if you spend cash, which is on a reoccurring expense, you're going to have an issue. You're going to have an issue, a big issue. Okay? David?
Good evening. David Twaddell from Rhodes and-
Okay. David?
Good evening. David Twadell from Rhodes and Simon. You know my partner, John Cox. John unfortunately has a conflicting meeting tonight, so I'm here in his stead. Partly responsive to the question that you've raised about why now. As I think most of you are aware, the incurrence of debt by a school district is the subject of the Local Government Unit Debt Act. And under the terms of that statute, debt of school districts is essentially supervised by the Department of Community and Economic Development. There are statutory and constitutional limits on the amount of debt that can be incurred and the way it's incurred. In the context of doing a, this kind of pre-authorization, if you will, for debt, in the context of a capital project, strikes me as a little similar to, if you were thinking about purchasing a new home or a new automobile, you might sometimes approach a bank to determine whether or not you qualify for financing. Doesn't commit you to buying the house or financing the house or buying the car or financing the car. But many people making those large purchases will sometimes seek to be pre-qualified so that they don't experience the disappointment of falling in love with a new home or a new car and finding out that they don't qualify for the debt that they would need to incur in order to make that purchase. We're not going to the bank, but the department does have supervisory responsibility over the district to make sure that if it is considering incurring debt, that debt does qualify under the existing statutory and constitutional limitations. So doing this as a parameters is much like that of saying, let's put out a potential sort of high scenario. If we could qualify to incur this much debt on these kinds of terms, then we know that that possibility exists and we can move forward with that knowledge. And the timing, I think, as Ken has indicated, is because you are at the process, at the place in your process where you can do this with some reasonable assurance that the numbers are not arbitrary. They are consistent with where you are and the options that you're considering. It gives you the advantage of having that step in place. Much could change and there is no obligation to issue the debt ever. And in fact, if your project slows down dramatically for some reason and you get several years out and you still want to do a project, there is always some possibility that you would have to redo this step if the size of the issue changes so dramatically or we are in an interest rate environment that Ken and I remember back in the 1980s where interest rates were extraordinarily high. Also a period of time where you would have been looking at construction period interest as a major source of funding for your project. We don't think about interest income in the last several decades. But things could change. But I think the judgment of your financial advisor and banker here is that you're far enough along in the project. There is some virtue because there are pending amendments to the Local Government Unit Debt Act that, that may get tractioned. They've been in the General Assembly for the last three years that would make the process a little more burdensome for you. Currently would not necessarily prevent you from incurring this debt, but there are other possibilities. So it's a sort of no-cost option of taking that initial step so that you have that approval in place on these kinds of parameters, which seem to be sort of in the ballpark for where you might end up if you proceed, as has been discussed this evening, to move this project forward, looking to actually incur debt below these limit, you know, at or below these limitations within the next, say, 12 months or so. The procedure itself is the same procedure that would be employed if you had opened bids on the projects this evening and say, okay, now we know exactly how much money we need to borrow. And Ken was here with a formal purchase contract and you were planning to close on the bond issue 30 days from now. We're just doing the legal part of that DCED approval early so that it's in place with enough wiggle room to accommodate, you know, reasonable options that may occur as you complete the planning process. So that process is under the state law that we've prepared a resolution that meets the requirements of the statute for the steps to incur debt, setting forth a maximum principal amount, setting forth a maximum principal maturity for each year of the potential issue for the bonds and a maximum interest rate. We generally describe the project as capital improvements to the school district. And we provide for the appointment of a paying agent, the issuance of the bonds, what their terms would look like. A lot of school district debt follows enough conventions that we know it is mostly likely that this debt would be in the form publicly offered fixed-rate bonds, principal payable annually, interest semiannually. Those are things which, while they legally could vary, as a matter of custom in the industry, don't. So it follows the same pattern as the debt resolutions that you've incurred or adopted in the past. It has been advertised for consideration in accordance with the requirements of the statute. And after you act on it, there will be a second add. That material, along with the statement of the district's current debt and borrowing capacity, would be filed with DCED where there is a 20-day repose period, after which we would expect the department to release the approval. From that point on, if you and your bankers determine that the time is right, that you can determine precisely the amount of money that needs to be borrowed and what the specific interest rates and specific maturity amounts will be, Ken will be back with an addendum that will set forth those specifics. So then you know what your debt would really look like. And that would need to be approved by the full board before debt can actually be issued. There's no obligation to do it. You could rescind this. If, if, I think, in fact, if the district were to abandon the project, sort of make a formal decision, we are not moving forward with any of these options. Circumstances have changed. There is a very simple procedure in which we file what's called a non-completion-of-sale document with DCED, at which point they remove this information from debt information relating to the district so that it's not confusing to anybody who would be looking at that. So with adoption of the resolution would authorize the future issuance of debt, subject to further action of the board to actually make it happen, and would authorize the filing of the necessary action with DCED to get that approval in place now.
I have a question. So, okay, so if we, if we agree to do this, and let's say we don't necessarily agree to do a project and it goes a few years down the road, maybe five years, interest rates change, things change. I, you know, I'm not trying to be negative about your financial advising services because I know you've done a great job with our district. But let's say that we find another financial advisor who's more competitive. Are we, if we agree to it tonight, are we obligated to stay with you? Or would there be an allowance at some point to maybe say, well, wait a minute, this financial advisor offers us something more competitive?
I'd say as a legal matter, this action is a governmental decision by an elected body. You retain the power to rescind that action by board vote in the future. Clearly, it is a contract, so, you know, there's, but not a contract that is enforceable by the banker against the district. You cannot be compelled to issue the debt to anyone, including this group.
That's the answer.
Thank you.
We hope that won't happen, though.
Well, I, yeah, and like I said, I know you have been very helpful in our district.
Good question.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jen, I appreciate your time coming in and explaining this stuff to the floor.
Jen, may I just see, since I'm trying to make something else here, are there any questions with respect to, because I know it's just coming up later in the meeting and I'm trying to get to a meeting, believe it or not. Is there any questions with respect to the York County School of Technology, on the refunding that they are doing, the additions of up to 12 million dollars? And there's no difference with respect to your annual cost? And we went, I went through this at our last meeting as well. But more than happy to address that, since I know it's on your agenda later here this evening. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to try to get to the meeting, so, thank you.
Drive safe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay. At 8:47, we're going to go into our first public comment session. This is a, for any comments for items on or off the agenda, we do have a three-minute time limit on that. If you do come up, I'd ask that you please state your name and your address for the record, please. Seeing no one coming, we're going to move on to President's Communications. I want to let you know that we did have an executive session this evening to discuss some personnel, legal, and some real estate issues. Also, some clerical items for later this evening for voting. We are going to go ahead and pull the transfers from the consent agenda and it will be placed on a roll call vote. We have added a Director of Communications along with a job description for that position. This is basically just a job title change. We will be changing from the PIMS Coordinator to the Director of Communications and there will be no change in salary with this change. Again, both the, the bond resolutions will also be a roll call vote as well as our solicitor vote will also be on a roll call vote. With that said, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 16th, 2017 board meeting.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry. There we go.
Seven yes, the motion passes. Next, we'll do, have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2017 board planning meeting.
So moved.
Yeah, first, have a second? We have a second, any discussion?
One minute, please. Shh. Okay, I apologize, it was marked under consent.
Again, seven yes, motion passes. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Take a look at each category, any questions?
First, we do the motion.
Oh, okay.
Disregard.
Right, have a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Now, first and a second?
Second.
Now, a second, discussion? All right, so look at each category. Any questions on your items under curriculum and professional development? No? Facilities doesn't have anything, anything under facilities? No? Human and fiscal resources?
Just the layoffs to get clarification. Those two positions are what was voted on last month in terms of making those cuts to secretaries and aid positions. So these are, that's the reason for those layoffs.
You are correct.
Correct. Any other questions on our human and fiscal resources? Moving on to safe and supportive schools. Any questions for any of these items? Okay, with that?
Was some discussion under the food service policy there. There was some, some changes that were, were made on that. I don't know if that's something we, maybe we should talk about, about the, the change to the, the debt allowance there. I don't know if that'd be something that...
The current policy that we're voting upon right now says K through 6, instead of getting a cheese sandwich meal, they're going to get the normal meal. 7 through 12, before, they weren't allowed to get a meal. Now we're giving them a meal from 7 through 12, but putting a limit of $30 for the year. So, once they hit that negative 30, they're done, so...
And I would just like to add on that. We are going to beef up some of our collection efforts and our procedures and surrounding those collection efforts because of the $30. Currently, they're not allowed to charge anything at all. And we are seeing some negative balances. So I'm working with the food service and my team to make sure they hit that $30, there will be no more charging. And we'll do our best to collect that debt.
It'll cover everything. That's where I'm at, setting up the agenda.
We have a 6 yay, one nay, motion passes. I'd entertain a motion to, all right, a motion for, to approve the transfers as listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Now, first and a second, discussion?
Just wanted to make for public record, I'll be abstaining from this vote to a family member. member involved.
Motion passes. Entertain a motion to accept the, I gotta find it here, the bond parameters resolution.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
That was Dennis that made the motion.
Hey, we have five ye, two nay, and so we do have, the motion does pass. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Obermeyer, Maxwell, and Hippel LLP as solicitor of record and to also retain CJ Law Firm for real estate and bond issues for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. So moved. Have a first, and a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? No discussion? And finally, I'd like to...
Yeah, we want to leave it to you.
You wanna do it?
The reports.
Okay.
And then during that one, we go through the motion.
Okay, we'll do that then. All right. So move on to committees. The Dover League Foundation, Mr. Cherry?
I just, once again, wanted to thank everyone that participated in our first annual golf tournament. I think it was a great success. Bobby, thank you for all your hard work there. Truly appreciated. So I think they're on a little hiatus right now for the summer, and they'll probably be gearing up for something in the fall, but I think that's in Brad's lap at this point in time. So, we'll wait and see what he has in store for the foundation in the fall, so, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Cherry?
Now, I just wanted to echo Mr. Cherry's comments that I took part in the golf tournament. I even won a special prize of last place. Although, I believe my prize was more, worth more than the third place prize once you divvy it up with my bucket of balls. I will be practicing, but thank you all for your hard work. It was a great day, lots of fun, for a great cause.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Cherry? Moving on, York Adams Academy, Mr. Amick?
On Monday, June the 5th, York Adams Academy had their spring graduation, and I would like to thank Mrs. Kroom, Mrs. Straswell, and Mrs. Geier for being there as well in attendance to represent Dover. It was a, graduation only lasts about 45 minutes, but it's an exciting event. We will be holding another meeting in June, the end of the month, due to the fact that we're looking for another director. And the Superintendent of Eastern, Dr. Pionoski, is going to be taking over the realms of Superintendent of Record in July 1.
Any questions for Ms. Amick? York County School of Technology, just wanted to let you know that June 6th, they held their graduation. Unfortunately, I was out of town for business and was unable to attend, but my understanding was it was a fairly good graduation for those students. Also, you have before you a vote, a motion to, for a resolution for bond refunding for the school. They are looking at spending up to $12 million to do some, some of the much-needed upgrades to their facilities. Right now, their current gym area is not large enough that they can't even hold all of their gym classes in the gymnasium, as well as sports teams on climate weather. They have students practicing in hallways. Again, it's not a real safe situation. Also, their locker rooms are the original locker rooms from 1969 that had no updates to them at all. So they're looking at that. They do have a prioritized list that they're going to look at, depending on how much they get approved for their financing. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the York County School of Technology Resolution for refinancing their 2007 bond.
So moved.
Have a first, and a second?
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Moving on to LIU Special Education, Mr. Cherry, Mrs. Banko.
Nothing at this time.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Cherry, Mr. Banko? Ms. Banko, excuse me. Okay, moving on. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Rollhauser.
Governor Wolf signed the pension bill yesterday. Nobody knows what real effect it'll have when it trinkles all down to the school districts. Takes effect in 2019, and talking about lunch programs. There's a bill they're working on to see what they can do to help this delinquency in students and their lunches.
Is that everyone?
That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Rollhauser? If not, moving on. Excuse me. PSBA Representative, Mrs. Brenton?
There's really nothing to report right now, other than, I think we discussed briefly at the last meeting, the October, for the conference in October in Hershey.
Okay. Any question for Mrs. Brenton? Okay. The Dover Industrial Development Committee, Mrs. Herman isn't here. Does anybody have anything from her?
She's having fun on vacation.
I'm sure. And she's probably not even thinking about us right now.
No, she's not.
All right. Critical Response Drill, Mr. DeShaw.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Nothing at this time?
The final, I mean, you have nothing to say. Wow, okay. All right. Move on to miscellaneous comments, observations from board members.
I just want to say thank you, Chuck, for running things tonight in Nate's absence. Very good job. Better you than me.
And I want to thank Mr. Wassler for the wonderful graduation that took place two Saturdays ago. The system you put up for the speakers, I could hear this year for a change, and I thought it was very great that all the parents and the people in the stands were very respectful. You could hear every student's name mentioned, and then the applause at the end. So you did an excellent job, so thank you.
Absolutely.
And all the kids were smiling as they walked across.
Yes, they're always smiling when you walk across. I understand that.
Anybody else?
I wanted to bring up a potential thing there, maybe we could look at. I wanted to ask maybe the Facilities Committee if you could, there's an area at the stadium that is, in the upper concourse there, that is fenced in. It's a mulched-in area right now. It's sort of, a little bit of wasted space. I was wondering if the Facilities Committee could look at that and see whether there might be any feasibility to expanding the open area there for maybe wheelchair access, handicap access, or if nothing else, just more room there for events that happen at the stadium there. It seems like maybe it'd be something we could do there, so. Just wanted to throw it out there as, you know, something maybe to look for down the road, see if there's practicality to that.
We'll discuss that at the next Facilities Meeting.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? With that, just want to take an opportunity to wish Mr. Cherry well. This is his last board meeting with us, and he'll be leaving us at the end of the month. You know, from a personal standpoint, I think he came on at a time when our district was kind of floundering a little bit, and through his leadership, I think we've got our district running in a good direction. We have our fiscal house in order. We have a good team administratively and in our schools now, and I think we're on our way. And again, I want to thank you for your time here and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
With that, moving on to our second public comment period. Again, any item on or off the agenda? If you have a comment, please move forward to the microphone.
I have a question. And I'm not public.
I actually wanted to get with you before the meeting and didn't get a chance due to your previous meeting, but I have a request from the Dover Youth Football Program. They would like to put a trailer down in the corner of that lot where they're going to play football. We have let organizations put sheds in different areas to store their stuff in, but they're specifically asking for like a trailer from a tractor trailer. And I wanted your input before I would say yes or no.
So who would be responsible for that? Would it become our property because it's on our land? Is it their property because they're going to have to carry insurance on it?
Have to carry insurance on it.
What happens when it starts to rust and look ugly? Do you have to take care of that? We always have the option to tell them to take it off for whatever reason. Okay.
Which is what we've done in the past with some of the, like the storied sheds we had. There used to be, I think there was, started out it was one, and it ended up there was three at the softball field that softball team, baseball team used, which are all gone now because they built that concession stand a couple of years ago with storied gin in it, and they store their stuff in there now, which is much, much, much better.
And so this would be something movable, too, if we ran into an issue and needed it to be moved?
I think so, yeah. No, I would, personally, I would want to put it as far back in the corner as I could get it to get it out of the line of sight, but, but again, I don't want to put it down there and then somebody will come over there and say, wait, but what's that doing down in my field, you know, without a go-ahead from the board, so. And I know this is a public comment, but I thought I'd ask.
What's it going to be parked on? Like, is it just going to be in the grass?
Just in the grass, yeah.
Okay.
Is that going to be a problem with, over time, with sinking into the mud? It gets kind of wet down there.
Could be. Could be.
Could they be required to put stone down as a foundation?
We could request that, yes. I know they want to build like a little steps going up to it, you know, so they can get in and out of it and store the material or their supplies in, you know.
I can see where that would be a very strong benefit to them. I mean, that's, that's an organization that's going to need some storied space of some sort.
Right, and I agree. It's just the trailer's the reason I'm asking.
Because it's a tractor trailer now as opposed to a trailer, a little box trailer?
It's going to stick, it's going to be higher.
Am I correct?
Yeah. It's going to be higher, it's going to be longer, it's, you know, it's going to be up, you know, have underneath, going to be something you can get underneath, so.
How you guys doing tonight?
Am I explaining this right or not?
Yeah, no, no, you're right on track. The trailer was already proposed in a proposal that was emailed to all the board members. It would be sitting back in the back right-hand corner. I believe John and Jeremiah did discuss about putting a foundation of the loose stone down first to prevent the trailer from sinking into the grass or the mud. And then we would have it set back further enough so it wouldn't go past where the mowing line is right now, if that makes sense. So it wouldn't impede into the actual mowed field part as it sits right now. And then we obviously would take care of the, excuse me, all the maintenance, the painting, rust removal, and it will be properly insured.
Now, do you still have the rubber tires on, or would you take them down?
We can remove them if you would like us to.
I guess the concern I have is just the deterioration, obviously, of the tire.
Correct.
Over time. Okay.
Is that intended to be like a, you know, as long as your organization's using the fields, it'll stay there? You won't be taking it in and out during, you know, periods of time?
Ideally, we would like to move it one time, and then obviously, based on the report we build with the district, we would like to keep it down there as long as possible. If baseball's down there as well, we could make room in the trailer for them to also utilize storage in that as well, since it's doors locked compared to the other little stone shed that's down there. I don't even know, do they even use it? No. Okay.
I didn't think we needed a vote on these matters.
Dave, according to policy, does it need a vote? Or are you just bringing it to the board's attention?
No, I'm just bringing it to your attention for, if somebody would have an objection to it, that's all.
It follows along with the policy?
Yeah, it does. But this is one of those, just like I talked about a little bit before, if there's something that's not quite black and white to me, I bring it to the, I bring it to the board and just ask your, you know, opinion, what do you think? You know, yes or no, blessing if you, however you want to say that. So I mean, if everybody's, if everybody's okay, I'll give them the okay to go ahead with it and, you know.
Yeah, I would just make sure we have liability insurance first.
Yes, yes. I don't have it yet, but we will, we will.
I actually have a question about that.
And with the understanding that there would be stone put down and possibly the removal of the tires?
Yeah, if you guys would like us to, I guess we could block it up, maybe, and maybe put like some vinyl around it to hide it, dress it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Whichever you would prefer, we can, we have the access to do.
Yeah, I would like to see it kind of dressed up a little bit, just as an eyesore, obviously.
Yeah, as of right now, the plan is it's going to be black, and it's going to have a red and gray stripe running lengthwise of it, and then it'll say something like, welcome to, I don't know, North Salem Field or something like that, painted on there, no permanent signage either, so it won't be a distraction.
Scoreboard on the side, and I'm just kidding.
Well, the scoreboard, we would love to have attached to it, however, I don't know if the metal exterior, being a thinner sheet metal, will actually support that. So we're going to be looking at something that we can wheel over and back in.
I'd say as long as it follows the policy.
Okay. Again, I just wanted to clear all that up. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else for public comment? Future meeting announcements, our board committee meetings and word planning meeting on June 15, 2017 has been, or they have been canceled. So our next meeting that we will be here will be July 18, 2017, and it'll be our regular board meeting, and it'll be 7:00 PM here at the administrative complex. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
What about committee meetings? Are we going to be notified individually or how?
For what?
Well, they said there's going to be a... Well, they said there's going to be a facility meeting in July.
There's typically no committee meetings in July or August anyway, so, unless your committee's using July to make up for June.
We currently don't have any.
I heard that rumor, I just asked.
We currently don't schedule them, we know that.
I know we don't, but...
I guess you could talk to Mr. Emick and let us know if you're going to have one.
If you're going to have one, I have to advertise the meeting at least five days in advance, so if you could, just let us know.
All right, again, with that, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All of us favor? All right.